Yeah.
What's that?
I'll make sure it works. Jigs are by ready.
At seven o'clock, call to order the regular meeting here at the City Council of Aransas Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard on January 26, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Everybody please rise for invocation, please. Nora, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day. Also, it's been a strong day for a bunch of families that had lost loved ones over the past week, especially the Morales family that laid their mother to rest today. I'd like to give thanks for the opportunity just to be here. Also, give us the wisdom to be able to acknowledge what we do is here for the betterment of Aransas Pass. With your blessings, would you please watch over us, guide us, guide our youth, our future of Aransas, guide all our people that work together to make this community so great, and take care of them and just guide us underneath your wings. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, and if the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have item A, the minutes of December 1st and then December 15th and January 5th of 2015.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
All in fairness, say aye.
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 This brings us to item number four, so our citizen comments. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to state your business. The floor is now open to anybody who's willing. Yes, sir. If you mind, come up here to the mic, sir.
I'm Dudley Ives. I live at 635 South Lamont here in Aransas. I moved here about two years ago.
Yes, sir.
The purpose of my talking to you tonight is to try to get the City Council to understand and know about a gentleman that's going around town and taking advantage of a lot of people like he's taking advantage of me. During the summer, I had a Mr. Lawrence Cruz. We signed a contract to build a garage for me, a 20-by-20 garage, single-car garage, and a workshop with a 10-foot covered porch on it. And the contract price was $19,500. He put off, he would come maybe three days a week, which, to begin with, that was fine. I told him, "He was trying to get started," he said, "and he had been taken advantage of, according to him, by a lot of homeowners." Well, come to find out, that may not be really true. He started out, he started digging the slab. It took him over a month to dig the slab, which now I found out it should have taken about maybe a week at the most from start to finish, and would have cost about $3,900 with concrete and everything. I knew he was taking his time and milking it, but I put up with it. It kept going, he got up the framing, and then in November, he pulled his little tantrum act, which he had done. This would have been the third time in November they threw a tantrum and said he was leaving. And I said, "Okay, fine, leave and don't come back." So I started getting text messages and voicemails from him because I put his and his partner's name and number on my reject list. So all he could do was give me a text message or a voicemail. Well, I got all kinds of voicemails and text messages from him. He had reported me to the Border Patrol because I had hired illegal aliens. He described them in a different manner. He'd come to my house and work, and he had, he was going to Texas Department of Insurance and Corpus and red-flagged my job, all kinds of things. There was a gentleman here that had been a framing contractor that had retired, Art Doherty, and he had been helping Larry lay out the rafters and everything.
So, Mr. Ives, basically you have a complaint against somebody's poor craftsmanship and failure to do their job, right?
Yeah, and...
Did you do a file report, Mr. Blanchard?
Okay.
No, I mean, have you or...
No. No, I haven't even gone to the police department yet. I think I probably have some criminal charges.
I would say, did you exchange money with him or...
Oh, yes.
Did you pay him upfront or...
Yes, and by the week for the labor. And when it got over $22,000, that was it. Now, I've had to spend money to try to keep it going and get it finished.
Basically, you want to make the public aware of this situation with the gentleman?
Yes, yes.
And his name's Lawrence Cruz?
Lawrence Cruz.
I just pulled him up on the database. He doesn't, he's not even a registered contractor in the city since 2012. And, Mr. Ives, I will tell you, one of the first things in the residence is to verify that they are a registered contractor in the city and are even eligible to do work here. He doesn't have any insurance or permit, so the odds that you have a permit for the structure he's built for you is slim to none, which opens up an entirely different can of worms. So I would please ask you to revisit with Mr. Brink before you leave today.
And supposedly, I gave him $100 to get his contractor's registration, license. Plus, he ended up with some more things that I'll discuss with the gentleman.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, I don't want to take up any more of your time.
No, I appreciate you bringing this up.
And my neighbor was, got involved with him too, and he was supposed to be here, but he didn't show up.
Well, I appreciate you at least taking the time to come up here and address this to us all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to exist? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Alarcon, and I am a local business owner here in Aransas Pass. Basically, I'm addressing the council this evening to discuss a building that was located behind my establishment that I have moved forward in hopes to open a tax office for this tax season. I currently have a stop notice on both buildings for work, and I'm trying to actually get information on what I need to do to move forward, hopefully in time to open for this season.
Mayor and council, I've already spoken to Carrie about the project. She has a storage building she's attempting to convert to an office space, which requires some building code items that need to be met. She claims to be out of time for those permit items to be met. Her options are meet the building code or file an appeal, submit your plans, and, you know, because one of them is ambient air and accessibility options to the shed. If you want to create an office space, it has to be handicap accessible. It has to have AC heating, those kinds of things. She has run out of time to do those things before tax season opens. Her method of appeal is to go to the Building Standards Board and explain why she doesn't want or cannot meet the building code, and then proceed through that. She doesn't have time to do that either, and so I don't have the mechanism to just waive away the building code.
Does she have all the information for the building standard code?
We spoke about what she needed to do. She had information about, she had come prior, spoken to the building official about the bathroom. There is a bathroom that's needed in the office space, but because it's close within 300 feet to the bar that's in front, they could share the restroom and that portion of the code could be waived. There's still the ambient air temperature of the code that needs to be met as well as accessibility to and from the shed or the storage building.
Which once, if you were allowed to do it, you can build a ramp and make it accessible and stuff.
What is the ambient, what is that, what is that?
The code calls for the space to be heated and cooled to a certain consistent temperature.
Okay, the building that I've moved is actually, it's been there for a very long time. It's already been an office. It has drywall, wall paneling, and it has an AC unit in, like a window in wood. The size of the building is, I believe, 16 by 10. And I am, like I said, able to build the handicap ramp and come into compliance with that AC unit and the walls being, I mean, it was, I believe the building was grandfathered. We're not restoring the building, just moving it. And of course, eventually going to build the ramp. Tax season doesn't end until the 15th, and the appeal process, you said I need to go where?
To the Building Standards Board. The issue with the building is, one, you have a stop work permit for doing work without a permit because the building was a storage building. It was not an office space. Now that it's being converted to an office space, there are certain criteria that have to be met that we discussed in the lobby.
Right, originally, the element was an office building. I just stored some items in it, not making it a storage unit, but somewhere I could store something when it wasn't in use of the office. So it was previously an office.
Did it have a certificate of occupancy as an office?
That I'm not sure because I just came over to, in April of '14 is when I took over the location.
It does not have a certificate of occupancy. It doesn't even have its own address to be...
That's correct, that's correct. That's why I went and spoke with the building inspector in August to let him know what my plans were for the beginning of January. And he did, he was aware of the building that I was moving because he did come and do the actual occupancy inspection in April or before April. I'd have to look it up, but he did, and he seen, he did tell me the only thing that I needed to do, since it was a building being moved that was already on the property, just being moved forward, that I just needed to write a letter to myself, giving myself permission for my clients to use the restroom inside the other facility.
And that's one component of the code, and we talked about. And you did electrical work, and that's some of the stop payment, some of the stop work orders is because there's work going on without a permit.
Yes, so to correct that, do I just need to go in and pay the permit? And I can start working again?
Well, there's a little bit more than converting that space that's going to be required, as we spoke about in the lobby. You're going to have to apply for a permit and apply for the things that are required. And then if it doesn't meet the code, you have an avenue for an appeal through the Building Standards Board.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything, address the council? The floor is open. Just want to make sure everybody hears me. And if not, that'll be the end of our citizen comments, and we'll continue on. This is going to bring us to item number five, consider enacted on election items, which A will be the City of Aransas Pass Texas General Election Order of Election for Municipalities, La Ciudad de Aransas Pass Texas, Texas, Elección General, Orde de la Elección para Municipales. And then be item B, the Resolution of 2015-750, Resolution of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, providing the date and time of the 2015 general election to be conducted by the San Patricio County Election Administration Office for early votes cast on direct recording electronic voting system by paper ballot, providing place, present numbers where the election is to be held, providing the rate of pay per hour, and the judges and the clerks, and providing date and time of early voting. Which Resolution is now 2015-70. Es una resolución de la Ciudad de Aransas Pass, Texas, suministrado la fecha y la hora de la elección de general 2015 de la ciudad para su realizada por la Oficina de Amenestrón de Elección de Cuandos de San Patricio para la lanz de los votos tempranos y la cuenta del registro directo electrónico se sumistó de voto y por la bolota de papel suministrado, la hora y número y de reciento donde la elección va a tener tenido. Suministrado el supuesto por hora para jueves, para los jueces, los visitos, de suministrado la fecha y la hora de votación temprana. And then there'll be item C, Contract with San Patricio County of Election Services. El contrato con el candidato de San Patricio para los servicios de elección. Thank you.
Standard, standard resolution calling for the upcoming election.
All right, so hopefully everybody understood that. We don't do no French here.
I am so glad that you could read that too, because I put that together.
Good for you.
Thank goodness for English to Spanish.
Well, I'd give thanks to my grandparents that raised me because that's the only way we're ever going to communicate. But anyway, how are we going to do these A, B, C individually or all at once?
You can do it all at once.
All at once, sounds good. So now I hear a motion for approval for items A, B, and C.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the items A, B, and C that have to do with the elections taking place.
I second the motion.
All in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
Did I have to say that in Spanish?
This brings us to item six, Consider Adoption of the Anti-
NIMBYism.
NIMBYism Action Plan as described in the city's fair housing activity statement.
It's, Mayor and council, this is a housekeeping item. It basically says we're going to meet all the federal regulations when we apply for grants and other federal and state assistance. And NIMBY stands for Not in My Backyard, which is veiled discrimination. So it's an anti-discrimination.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt the Anti-NIMBYism Action Plan.
Second.
All in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item number seven, Consider An Act on the City Manager's Item, which will be A, Combron Harbor Estimate Bulkhead Anticipated Task and Fees for Not to Exceed $34,550 Submitted by RVE Engineering. Be item B, Combron Harbor Estimated Utility Condition Anticipated Task and Fees Not to Exceed $38,683 Submitted by RVE Engineering. Item C will be a Warden for Concrete Bulkhead Repair Combron Harbor Construction Contract with Derek Construction Company Incorporated. Item D will be a Final Change Order for the Veterans Memorial Park Submitted by Sean Miller. Item E will be Aquatic Center Repairs Not to Exceed $120,000. Item F will be concealing the... Canceling, my bad, apologize. Canceling the request for proposals of the Aquatic Center Management System Services. Item G will be purchase of new jet or truck for the Aransas Pass Utility Department, which I know we need. Item H will be general services contract with RVE Engineering. Sir?
Well, 7A, 7B, Combron Harbor Assessment Costs. It continues on the utility condition and the bulkhead inspection. We did have an underwater inspection recently, and this is further inspection of the bulkhead to get a good idea on condition and then utility conditions. But, Pat, I think, is there an amendment to this one on, no, never mind, different item. So these tasks are not to exceed the 73-233 component, and this is paid out of bond 2014, the section that was allocated to Combron Harbor.
And this is the entire bulkhead or just a section of it?
All of it.
All of it?
This is the project that's supposed to take about four months.
Okay. And this is just more inspections of that? Or more in-depth?
More in-depth.
Yeah.
We can vote on that as we go along, or do you want to just do them all?
I think we just... I think you should do them individually.
Individually?
Yeah. So now I hear a motion for approval for item A.
I'll make a motion that we approve the task and fees not to exceed $34,550 and submitted by RVE Engineering.
Second the motion.
All in fairness, say aye.
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 And item B is the utility condition. It's basically, obviously checking the condition of the water sewer and lift stations.
Does that include electrical or no?
No.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the utility condition task and fees not to exceed $38,683 as submitted by RVE Engineering.
Second the motion.
All in fairness, say aye.
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 Well, item 7C is the whole purpose for moving the meeting today to the 26. We did have bids for concrete bulkhead repair. This is the section of bulkhead that is in front of the dry stack and the restaurant. Unfortunately, we had two bidders, Derek Construction and Russell Marine, both of which came in above what the city had originally allocated. The construction, the total budget came in a little under $60,000 on top of what the city had already projected for repair. And that is because prior, prior projects have really lost their shirt when it comes to doing the removal of the debris because there is just such an unknown of what's down there. But the fact is, if we don't, if we don't commit, number one, we lose the grant, and then two, we're in violation of our lease with the lessee on that property because we committed to make the repairs. So the staff's recommendation is to award the bid to Derek Construction and then also add an additional $60,000 above the construction budget to complete the task, which makes the total work 329, 122 or so. So the city's portion of that 329 is about $90,000.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item C? Do I hear a motion for approval for item C?
Well, I make a motion that we award the bid for concrete bulkhead repair, Combron Harbor Construction, To Derek Construction Company, Inc., For A Total Of 329,121, Minus The $90,000 At The City Pace.
Second the motion.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
Item 7D, Veterans Memorial Final Change Order Not To Exceed $15,000. We did have some concrete repair. There was an error on my part in adding and subtracting. I do still owe the concrete repair $4,800. There is some electrical that has to be run in order to uplight the poles and uplight the monuments, as well as some final concrete pads for the benches. And that will complete the work to Veterans Memorial Phase One. I do anticipate coming back to the council in the next few months with the bathroom design. Whether we choose to go skid mounted or whether we choose a formal building remains to be seen.
So it's a total of?
It's not to exceed $15,000. I don't have a formal bid on the electrical components yet.
I have a question before. Any dates as far as when it's finally going to be completed? I've had a few residents come by and inquire that.
The only thing we're waiting for is the monument.
The monument.
That's, and we had an email to India today we were waiting on. The monument actually, believe it or not, is, granted is bought from up north, shipped overseas to be polished and then shipped back. And it's cheaper than having our American stateside folks do it and ship it to us. That's how the Monument Company, Harrison Monument Company does business. So that's the only thing we're waiting on is shipment of the monument to complete the park, the setting.
Okay, so before we open it up for anybody to use, if we're just waiting for that, we can't open it up for the kids to play?
We could. There's a grading, a final tripping hazard grading that needs to happen and need to complete the change order so he can do that and get rid of any loose ends. And then other than that, we're ready to go. We can open it for the playground equipment.
Until official open it.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item D?
I make a motion that we approve the change order for Veterans Memorial Park Not To Exceed $15,000.
Second.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
Item 7E is, actually, I wish I could tell you it was less than $120,000 as stated in the item, but it's actually closer to $160,000. Basically, this item is, the Aquatic Center has had deferred maintenance. In other words, we haven't touched it in a very long while. The cool decking needs to be replaced. There are some leaks that have caused the decks to shift. This $160,000 would include a complete remodel of the bathrooms and the facility, the interior facilities. It would replace all of the cool decking and it would have a company come in and level out the pools themselves. We are getting the leaks repaired as we speak. There was a company out, but the damage has already been done with the underlying leak. So that estimate is $160,000. And at this point, I would tell you that we would pull it from reserves. I think we're going to end the year ample enough to be able to absorb it, but I don't have an identified funding source right now.
Who's going to be doing the work, Sylvia?
We would put it out. Well, Uratec, we've received bids from Uratec on the approving the leveling. And the cool decking really only has, and the contractors know, cool decking really only has one manufacturer that does that. And that's all of that, what looks like grip when you're walking and it keeps it cool. That's a bulk of the repairs. We allocated about $50,000 for the remodel of the bathrooms and that would go out for bid. We did modify the pool hours simply because we're in the process of repairs and this needed to come to you. But we're going to do a very, very strong marketing push now that we have data from last year that our auditor put in the point-of-sale software. Complete with the mascot and a draw that's going to make the Aquatic Center a destination and a complete customer service revamp of the lifeguards and the training and all of that. But there is a substantial investment just to keep the facelip up of the pool to make it an attractive place to be. So.
Is there any questions from council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item E?
Will I make a motion that we approve the repairs to the Aquatic Center Not To Exceed $160,000? Is that what you want me to make?
Yes.
Not to exceed $160,000.
Second.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
What brings item F?
Well, 7F, we did go out for RFP for privatization of the Aquatic Center. We did not receive any good viable bids. The bids that we did receive called for the city to pay fees and things like that and also make substantial investments. So at this point, we're going to cancel or request to cancel the RFP. And again, there's some things I'm going to share with you at the latter part to give the Aquatic Center one last push in order to try to turn that corner and start becoming profitable. I don't think we're ever going to get to the point where we'll break even, but at least we're at the point of not hemorrhaging as much.
Do I hear a motion for canceling item F?
Well, I make a motion that we cancel the request for RFP for the Aquatic Center Management System.
I second.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
Item 7G is a new jetter. We did allocate about $600,000 for equipment. This particular item was allocated at $55,000. I do not have a viable bid from any one of the equipment purchasing companies. So I would venture to tell you that I'm not ready for this item and I would ask the council to pass.
Now brings to item H.
General Services Contract With RVE Engineering. We have allocated $45,000 or had allocated $45,000 to RVE. And that was task-specific, general engineering and any items that we need assistance with. We have a similar contract with LNV. RVE has expended its $45,000 and this item is an additional $45,000. This is a way to keep a handle on costs so we know where we're at and it's not just a blank check. And so we're doing incremental funding.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item H?
I make a motion that we approve the General Service Contract With RVE Engineering Not To Exceed $45,000.
I second.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
We are passing on item eight.
Well, this is going to bring us to item number nine, Consider An Act On Approving The Proper Disposal Of All Computers And Office Of Equipment.
We've got a lot of it. Jeff, do you want to go through the item? Jeff stepped out. It really is a matter of cleaning up, doing some housekeeping and disposing of all of the old typewriters and computer equipment that basically has little to no salvage value. We would put it out for bid to see if anybody, you know, wanted the equipment, but I don't really think the items have any salvageable value at this particular point in time.
Sylvia, if you don't mind, before we continue on, man, if you do me a favor, that gentleman that walked out, please send him an email or something, tell him thank you for being here this evening. I do appreciate it. Okay, I do appreciate him being here. All right, sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. It's allowing us to dispose of old equipment.
Is there any equipment at the old Public Works Building?
There's-
Where the water tower at?
There's typewriters and old printers and dot matrix printers. There's, there's-
We got most of the computers out in the last time we went around. But there's still some monitors and old typewriters and guys are seeing shit.
Are we going to go through that? Yeah, we'll put it out for bid and see if anybody has any use for it. Who is the auction seller?
I make a motion that we approve the disposal of all computer and office equipment.
Second.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second? I'm sorry?
Billy.
Item 10, I'm sorry.
Brings to item 10, Consider An Act On Awarding The Bid To Demolish Or Acquire The Building Located On 360 North Commercial, Which Is By The Taco Place, Right?
Yes, sir. This is the building that's had the D on it for some time. We did have some offers to acquire the building. We put it out for bid for either demolition or acquisition. We received a bid from Brewster Construction for $500 to demolish the garage and remove the building. The next, lowest next to that was $4,000 and that, the other bids that came in were for complete demolition. So staff's recommending awarding to Brewster Construction who would remove the building and complete the demolition.
Did he give a timetable? I bet it's like two days probably.
I'm not sure.
By the time the sun goes down, he'll have that thing gone.
Now, come on, Mr. Sors, let me open the 14 real quick. Right.
I remember about a year and a half, two years ago, I originated with that complaint because I was complaining about, it was across from the church, from the assembly gun. The garage had gone from, until it was laying down. Will that be included in that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's the garage and the-
Okay, that way I can report. Get a brownie star.
So do I hear a motion for approval for item 10?
Well, I make a motion that we award the bid to Brewster Construction for the removal and the demolition of the property located at 360 North Commercial.
I second.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item number 11, Consider An Act On Approving Emergency Purchase Of Equipment Related To The City Lift Stations.
Our lift stations are in, are in pretty disrepair. We are completing the SCADA system for the waterside. And as we move on to the super side, it's obvious our pumps and things are out. There's, this particular pump has been out for a while and it is an emergency item to be repaired and it's a little over $8,000. I would expect in this next fiscal, we have a new public works director. We're going to put together a plan on how to begin addressing all of our maintenance issues. And I'll introduce him here in just a second.
Sylvia, I have a question on these pumps and stuff. Do we have actual alarms that go to a computer or is it just checked daily by?
Not, today, no. The SCADA system that's being installed for the water, yes, will give emergency outlook to smartphones and iPads and things like that. The projection for our next operation is to move to the lift stations. But before we move to the lift station, each one of those lift stations has a lot of electrical component and things. And it's going to be an expensive proposition. But in the long term, we're better able to manage our assets without sending a crew and a truck and everything out to manually turn on a pump. Our plan is to have redundancy everywhere in all of our pumps and all of our stations. And this is really just one of the issues that shines when you don't have a backup system and it goes down.
So I hear, do I have a motion for approval for item number 11?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of equipment related to the city lift stations.
Second the motion.
All in first say aye.
Aye.
This brings to item number 12, City Manager Updates. Sylvia, you're up.
Well, I will introduce Fernando Quinbania. Fernando, please stand up and address the council. This is our new public works director. He officially started today moving into our area. And his wife is a teacher in Sitten now, so.
Good evening, council members. I'm happy to say that I, today was my first day. It was exciting. Excited to be here. I got a lot of great ideas. I've been working with Sylvia and some of the other team members and brainstorming already of what we're going to do to improve. I graduated in 2004 from Texas A&amp;M. It was an engineering degree. I've, the past 10 years, I've been doing engineering work for Tech Dot, for the city, for private firm, construction. So I have well-rounded engineering knowledge. And like I said, I'm excited to be here and ready to run and get this thing going. So I want to thank you and really excited to be part of the City of Ranses Pass.
Thank you very much.
Well, that takes one of my hats off. But I will tell you, I wanted to make the council aware that we did do a massive restructure of the Public Works Division because Fernando is going to be tasked with putting some of our comprehensive and our master plans together so that we've got a plan and an outlook on how we repair and put all of our systems together. Candy has been moved over operations at an assistant director level. James Hale has moved from Streets over to the Water Division. And Sid Villareal has been placed over the Streets Division. And the foreman and the crew leaders have shifted a little bit. Parks has been carved out completely out of Public Works and we've created a division called Community Enrichment, which is going to encompass the library, the Civic Center, the Aquatic Center, the Senior Center, and those things that are public service driven where we've got a media, we've got a presence. And that, those crews that are associated with the parks will still do the mowing and the right-of-way, but often we pull away a public works person to go do an assembly at Civic Center, for example, or to come do a building maintenance item. And so they'll be isolated and independent of their own so that our water sewer crews are focusing on water sewer and street. I've asked Sarah Lee to lead the Community Enrichment Division. Sarah Lee and I are still in discussion, but I think it's going to be a positive. I think it's going to be a positive outcome. And really, the community enrichment portion of it is really the marketing and the branding and the face of the city. It is, those places that our residents and our visitors want to hang out. So Sarah's perfect for that particular division. We do have a Citizens Academy starting on February the 10th. Coupled with that is a town hall meeting that is scheduled for February the 3rd at the Civic Center. It is an opportunity for us to bring to light everything that's happening right now and a chance for our residents to ask questions and be engaged. I touched a little bit about the Aquatic Center revamp. That $160,000 is going to go a long way in making that place the place to be. We've received a little bit of a respite with Schlitterbahn not coming online as fast as we anticipated. And so this is really our last push to get it right. The staff, you know, Brooke and Manny and Sarah and the folks have wonderful ideas on how to get us there using social media. And now that we have data, we actually have a place to run. The Texas A&amp;M students also had done that report, so we're putting all of those pieces in. So I hope this is a very successful season for the Aquatic Center.
Have a question on that.
Yes.
If I can ask questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a schedule already in place to keep the pool, you know, minor repairs to keep it from blowing?
Prove a maintenance plan.
You know, some kind of maintenance plan?
We're going to be working on that and we're going to be coming to the MDD board as well for a maintenance plan. There is, you know, at a minimum, there's probably a $100,000 investment every year into maintenance that needs to be done. Manny's done an outstanding job trying to get our pumps and things situated and the Aquatic Center hasn't had anything touched to it in 10 years. So things are broken and yes, we'll have a long-term maintenance plan. Shorter term though, we've got to fix some of the superseries.
Keep a handle on it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Sylvia, and also with the preventive plan, we're going to better inform our employees of what to look for in case they hear something that's not quite running right too, so they can alert us.
Yes, sir. We do have a potential offer to an Aquatic Center Director as well. Manny's in final negotiations for that, so we hope that person's a start here very soon. The Aquatic Center hours- Okay, she came on board. The Aquatic Center hours typically start in March and our real upswing doesn't happen until May. So we're going to take the March and the April timeframe as opposed to opening. We're going to take that time to really customer service train our lifeguards, get the facility up and running, and jam-pack May through September so that we have good revenue receiving, but it's jam-packed with activities from, you know, movies to dive-in nights, to service member nights, to mommy's day out, to daddy's day out, kind of thing. So we already have a full calendar packed.
Manny, with the new person coming on board, she does realize, like all aspects of the city, we do believe in accountability.
And actually, this was made today.
Okay. Good deal. Appreciate it.
Um, we do have a media spotlight. Channel six is going to, um, do an in-depth story on Aransas Pass, uh, latter part of this week, early part of next week. That'll run during sweeps week. Um, they're gonna not only, um, highlight the, the ship, the Aransas Queen, but also all of the surrounding growth, um, any potential plans for harbor reconstruction and, um, housing growth, uh, population growth that's coming to Aransas Pass. So we will be on, uh, probably two or three, four and five-minute segments, so that's a very good media attention for Aransas Pass.
And so they will be able to correct the item of being Aransas Pass ship and not the Port Aransas ship that I've been hearing at six o'clock this afternoon? Which I know our newspaper gets it right.
Yes, sir. Well, you know, channel, Channel six gets it right. Channel three is not. We've been in communication with, with Channel three.
You're right, I was listening.
Yeah, i- i- it's actually Channel three. They've not done as good a job on their research as Channel six. And just so everybody understands, the Pride of Texas ship is not docking in Aransas Pass. They've not approached the city at all. And as far as we've been able to determine, the ship does not even exist, so.
It's a ghost ship.
It is a ghost ship. Um, we do have some engineering updates. I had put it in your, um, in your last email, the, uh, the bid for twenty-seven twenty-five. And Johnny's here, uh, if you have any questions for Johnny on, uh, either FM twenty-seven twenty-five or any of our other Highland projects.
I, I have a question, Johnny, but when do you think that twenty-seven twenty-five will come to completion? That will help us with our water in that area, not only for the, for the Humane Society?
No, that's ten six, this is twenty-seven twenty-five cycle three.
The other one, ten sixty-nine, when are we gonna try completing that one?
That's a, that's a Tech Dot project. We were told they'll have a shovel in the ground in March. That's what we were.
I just wanna ask about that.
So once they start, we get to follow alongside them?
I, I have to bring an item to council. If, uh, you, you saw, um, I don't know if you saw the, um, they gave us an extension on the grants because we didn't have enough connections. There's an item that if we're not able to, to get that, the city needs to still make that connection. It's an important turn to our, um, Highland project, so we'll be bringing that to you either way. That's planned within a year for that to be completed.
So the twenty-seven twenty-five, September of this year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Good deal.
It's, it's going. I just wanna make sure.
It's advertised now for bids already.
Okay, I, I know we have a deadline on that, okay?
Uh, and I did wanna bring the council up to date on the, um, uh, the property that's being cleared on thirty-five. We did come to a final agreement with the developer on water line extension and so, um, now we're, we're completing some final tasks and either working with the county or allowing a different type of subdivision, but, uh, he was ready to write a check, so.
Thank you, sir.
That's what I have.
There's no other questions for anybody?
We have, uh, Chief, Chief Blanchard's up.
I have a quick question on. What's, how is the word being, uh, put out for the town hall meeting?
Well, after.
I just wanna make sure we have.
We're gonna start blasting it now after you guys are, are now where, for the February third, we'll, we'll blast it. Social media, we'll put it all over town on the flyers, door hangers.
You know, where you can put it, like, on the water bill?
Uh, is it too late for the water?
I'm just thinking, cause, you know, I just wanna make sure our residents know.
Can you put it on a sign in front of Civic Center?
Nope.
Nope.
That's a, no, that's a hot.
Doesn't put heads in.
But we could, we could get a banner. We could get a, we could get a.
Yeah, I have a question about that sign. That sign was originally, you know, for heads in beds and this and that, but wasn't the original sign damaged and then it was replaced by another sign, another different flag?
Yes, but it was paid with hot funds.
Okay, I'm just asking.
That's the issue. That, if the council chooses to reimburse the hot fund, which is maybe a discussion to be had here when the chamber item comes up. Because the, the city, um, we paid fifty-five thousand dollars from hot funds to pay for the sign, which is why the sign has limited uses. Had we paid it out of general fund, then it's a community sign and, you know.
All right, thank you.
And we've gotten out racial profiling.
Council, we, uh, just, it's formality, present to you the report for racial profiling. We were audited again by the same auditor we've used the last couple of years. We've had no issues, uh, in the area of racial profiling. This year, we had no complaints on racial profiling and, uh, I'm not alarmed nor is command staff that any of the members as far as occupations and stops know what we've seen. There's no questions, I'll go on to the next one. Uh, December stats, we did see a increase in calls during December. Uh, traffic stops are down a little bit. I'm not gonna go over all the members, uh, on that, but the highlights is, of course, we had that seven-vehicle accident, which was a, uh, confiscation manslaughter charge was filed. And we are also considering on the second child that was severely injured, filing another charge for injury to a child. We've not done so yet and that may go to grand jury for indictment. We had a bunch of charitable events. The PD had stuck with the traditional in December, but the city also got involved. So we were very creative on some of the things that we did too, so it was awesome. Very charitable December, uh, a lot of involvement. My mom personally came out on a couple of occasions and she was just blown away.
It was a pleasure to meet her.
We had that, of course, the barricaded subject was a call that we had. He had, uh, threatened severe injury to a family member and barricaded himself. We got him out successfully. Holiday fireworks, we started a new initiative with the Parks Department formally. And, uh, uh, we decided to go out and give out trash bags and kinda help educate the public that was participating in it. It was great. If they didn't wanna haul the trash bags off, they were heavy duty, we told them to plop them on the ground, we'll pick them up. And that's what happened. Uh, I've received compliment from, uh, at least two different people so far. One who cleans up out there regularly that this is the cleanest they've ever seen that, that area left, so we're gonna keep up with that agenda.
I, I just want the council to know that was New Year's Eve when staff is still at, at eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night, while everybody's already getting started. Staff's still out there handing out trash bags, so kudos to Manny and PD.
Yeah, it was awesome. I love working in New Year's Eve. It's my favorite time. Still a kid at heart. Yeah, and Fire Department was there too. Uh, the next report we have is the annual public safety report. This year, I'm also posting this as soon as I get them presented to y'all. It'll be published through our website as well. We, I'm just gonna go through it quickly. We did see a hike in, uh, calls for service. That includes PD, fire, EMS, everything. Like twenty-eight hundred calls for service more this year as over last year. Fire and EMS alone had three thousand eighty-eight of those, which is two hundred and forty-two more than, uh, last year. Then I break down PD, I'm able to break down PD a little bit more for police events, twenty-four thousand events, eighteen thousand of which were non-traffic related. Uh, five hundred and forty-one of those events turned into a, a criminal case that's real involved that CID had to work on. And if you look at that, uh, basically, uh, detective, in how, of the in-house detectives, each of them received about fifteen cases a month. Now, of those cases, it's not something you wrap up overnight. A lot of those carry on and can carry on for a few months of investigation. Uh, on average, an officer was needed eighty-three times a day to respond to a call. Now, it includes the backup numbers. So when an officer goes to like a disturbance and another one backs him up, that's two officers needed for that one event. Last year, we were at seventy-nine, uh, an average of seventy-nine a day. Uh, the average response time has dropped, uh, from three-seven to three-point-four seconds. Traffic events, we boosted that up over last year, forty-three hundred. We had fifty-five hundred, uh, this year. Take it to twenty-one hundred of that twenty-five hundred were violations. Our top violations, again, speeding, no insurance, expired inspection, and then the whole list goes on there. Actually, I think prohibited use of cell phone, city ordinance was on there too. Uh, adult arrests, we're up on arrest. I told you that we're up a hundred and sixty-one. That's actually inaccurate because my last year report did not take into account the first two months that were still on the old record system. We actually, we're not up that many. I think we're up only sixty-nine, I think, on arrest. On juvenile, we're up five juvenile detentions. Code enforcement, uh, Brake was busy. He handled about four hundred and thirty-five code enforcement events. Uh, of that, I highlighted that there were sixty-seven junk vehicle cases worked where he issued a citation. Uh, I can tell you this fix-it, tick-it process, uh, is tremendous in saving us time and resources. Uh, I think less than five is what the court reported to me that actually made it to court because the majority of people did not wanna have to get to the point of making. Forty-five other code enforcement violations. You have the UCR numbers right there, what we reported. Uh, as I was doing this report, I received the UCR, uh, where we stand as far as two thousand thirteen with us and the rest of the nation. I haven't really been able to go over that very well. Some of our numbers are up, some of our numbers are, uh, down. Uh, stolen property is up, but then if you look at our recovery, our recovery's up over a hundred percent. The other thing that I think's helping with some of our successes with stolen property, so you see the amounts, the amounts vary, but we actually have a good success rate at, at closure, uh, is, I think, in part due to our bait property. We had, uh, twenty-seven bait events in two thousand fourteen where, uh, we were able to arrest a guy every time. Now, that also stacks against, that looks negatively because it looks like we had a theft or a burglar or whatever and the lo, the property lost counts against us. But it also counts against us as a recovery, so. Uh, drugs, you're gonna see, uh, marijuana going down, but you're gonna see things like heroin and, uh, the others going, methamphetamine going up. Don't let that confuse you. Those numbers are big, but that North Eleventh Street drug bust that we had was huge. And, uh, it was huge in the coastal bend.
Yes.
Wow.
So that was a, that was a big deal to get that guy off the street. And most of those numbers come from that address.
Wow.
Yeah. We had nine hundred and fifty-five open records requests. All were answered without having to send to an attorney general for an opinion. We're very transparent, so we don't have a problem sharing information. You got the asset forfeitures, our, our federal forfeiture fund, we brought in a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in seizures last year. We had a heavy expense year too, two hundred and forty-three thousand. We use that for a lot of our updating, like the taser cameras and stuff like that. Some of those updates were included with Prime Board, uh, Guardian tracking, web maintenance, fleet maintenance, purchase of fleet vehicles. And then the state forfeiture. Training, forty-three hundred hours of training we had this last year. We also hosted sixteen schools. And we were able to award participants to those schools up to forty-two hundred hours of training. In that, including our people and people from the outside areas that participated. There's some of the highlight classes. Uh, primetime, uh, interview and interrogation brought in the most from around the state. Uh, website, we have over a hundred thousand newer visitors or more visitors this year on our website than last year. Uh, I think day, our busiest day, we had fifty-one hundred people visit so far this year, uh, this month. We've had more visitors this month than we've ever had in a month prior, in January. So we get a lot of activity through Facebook. Uh, those reports are both listed there as well. People can view those reports in summary. And then, of course, Facebook, our heaviest day on Facebook was when the officer jumped into the harbor to save the dog. We had, uh, that video was viewed in that one day over seventy-four thousand seven hundred times.
Wow. Now I'm gonna have to ask.
Nationwide.
I'm gonna have to ask. Somebody asked about a calendar of your officers.
Hey, you know what? I don't mind getting on a calendar, swimsuit or something like that.
No, no, no.
Oh.
Chief, we did sexual harassment training. Come on.
I said swimsuit.
But no, Erica, I do appreciate on Facebook, when you find items, you're trying to get their owners to come collect.
And I think, I think today, we might've had our first person say, hey, I think you have my son's body.
That's good.
So hopefully, hopefully it works. But yeah, follow us online. If you're not, we give out a lot of information and we need your help often, so.
It's a good deal.
Thank you.
What he didn't tell you is the police online activity has made national news twice this year, or twice in two thousand and fourteen, so kudos. Eric never gets off the computer, though.
Good news, and it's good news. Good job.
All right, that wraps up, uh, updates.
Okay. This is gonna bring us to item number thirteen. We're gonna recess the open meeting and retire to executive session pursuant to chapter five-five-one of our Texas government code. Item A of section five-five-one point oh seventy-two is deliberations regarding real estate property, Cambra Harbor with Mr. Hal Jones. Item B is section five-five-one point oh seventy-four deliberations regarding personnel, which will be municipal court judge and associate judge. Right now, the time is seven fifty-six. Open meeting is closed and we're gonna retire to the second session.
[inaudible]